Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the December 6, 2012 Regular Meeting of the USD 233 Board of Education. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Ashley.
Here.
Dr. Daniels.
Here.
Mrs. Felter.
Here.
Mrs. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Colan.
Here.
Mr. Shear.
Here.
Would you all rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. She's standing up faster than I do. Before we start tonight, I promised Ms. Hibbs that I would put a plug in for the children's shoe fund that's set up at the back of the room. So far, we've purchased 12 pairs, but our goal is 25. I believe it's $20 a pair, and all of the information is back there, so I really encourage you to participate tonight. Our first presentation is a day at Fairview Elementary, and I believe making the presentation is Mr. Brent Jaeger, Mrs. Amanda Adie, and Dr. Dugan. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm excited to introduce to you tonight Amanda Adie, who is a fourth-year, second-grade teacher at Fairview Elementary. Amanda has taught kindergarten and second grade in our school district, both at Fairview and at Rolling Ridge. She also was a PDS intern in our district, so her history with ALATHA is only five years deep, but pretty rich at that. So she is going to share tonight with you a day in the life of her, what she does in her second-grade classroom during the day. And through her presentation, I know that you'll see things that you all have made decisions on as a Board of Education, and we're excited to share those things with you tonight through Amanda. So with that, Mrs. Adie.
My name is Amanda Adie. I teach second grade at Fairview Elementary. As you can see in the picture, I have my second-grade class, and I have 17 second graders this year. Five of my second graders this year are ELL students, which means that they leave my classroom during the day to receive some extra support during the day. I also have three students in my classroom this year that are receiving special education services. So as we go through this today, I just want to highlight some of the aspects in my classroom that open the door for success.
Hi, welcome to our class.
Hi. I don't know why they sound so scared in the beginning of this, but they have been so excited through this process, knowing that you were going to get to see them. So every picture that I've taken, their smiles have meant so much to me, so I hope you can see that through the pictures today. One of the things that I believe, as a second-grade teacher, is I just believe that my students deserve a positive greeting at the door. You can see in the picture that sometimes that's a high five, and sometimes my kids need a hug in the morning. You know, sometimes it's just something as simple as a smile, or just something such as saying, you know, "Oh, I love that shirt that you're wearing today," or "Go Spider-Man." They love anything like that, and it just reminds them that they're at school, they're safe, our school is safe, they're there, and everything's going to be just fine. And, you know, they've had such a busy morning, so that positive greeting really starts their day off on a positive note. At the beginning of the day at Fairview, we have primetime, which is an instructional focus time, and this time during the day gives me about five to 10 students, and I have the opportunity during this time to meet the specific needs of my students. So I don't have just my class during this time. I actually have different second graders from the other second-grade classrooms, and we focus on specific math and reading skills. And the great thing about primetime is that I'm able to diagnose a specific need and then also give them feedback during that time. One of the awesome things about our day is Envision, and that's right at the beginning of our day after primetime. And what I love about Envision is that my students have the opportunity to use math manipulatives. They get to talk to each other during math. They get to use the math vocabulary in the lessons, and also they have that really valuable time to work with partners and also work independently. So you can see in this picture, one of these pictures, we were actually just started regrouping, so you can see that we're working with manipulatives to move through that process, and then also some hands-on activities in the next picture where they got to work with a partner. I believe in my classroom, no matter what comes into my classroom, no matter what the students look like, what they feel like, I believe that all of my students will be successful. And one of the things that I focus on is just teaching them to see themselves as successful. So I want to show you this quick video. Joseph, when you visualize yourself being successful on your assessment, what does that look like in your head?
There's like a red carpet, and I'm walking with like a nice suit, and everybody like taking pictures of me.
And how does that make you feel when you're successful?
And I got the paper, and I kept holding it, and people had pictures of me.
So as you can see, we do a lot of talk in our classroom about success, and, you know, some of my students come into my classroom, and I have to teach them how to be successful because their confidence isn't quite there yet. So that's one of the great things about teaching second grade, is that I get to see them grow in their confidence in a lot of different areas. One of the things that I also believe that just opens the door for success in second grade is that I have an amazing team. And during our weekly PLCs, we have data-driven conversations, and during these conversations, it's so beneficial that we have the opportunity to discuss the student needs across the grade level. We get to share observations because we share our second-grade students, and it also just gives us the opportunity to assess their progress and just to make sure all of our students are moving forward. One of the things that I also believe is that my students thrive in my classroom because it's a positive classroom, and that was something that we've done so much in professional development. So one of the things that you'll see any day that you walk into my classroom is you'll see clear expectations, and those expectations are always set before any activity. My students know what I'm going to see during activities, they know what I'm going to hear during an activity, and that just really saves my instructional time for those things. I believe, you know, that throughout the day, my students have to have those regular opportunities to practice their rules and their procedures during the day. I also, you'll always hear in my classroom positive feedback, and, you know, there are times that my students need some constructive feedback, and in those cases, it's always a private conversation, and then I always make sure that I follow up with those students. One of the things that I also focus on during the day is just making sure that I'm making those deposits in my students' emotional bank accounts. Thank you to the Board for your support with technology. I've had my students hands-on with technology throughout the school year, and this is one of their favorite things about second grade. You can see here in the picture that we have an iPad in our classroom, and that has been the highlight of our school year. I have a few students that actually have specific goals through apps on the iPad. It's able to support their phonics development. And then I also have an iStudent of the Day, so every student in my class, whether or not they're struggling or they need enrichment, get the chance to use the iPad. And that, when they come into my classroom and see their name on the board, that they're the iStudent, they just light up. You can also see with Envision, we have so much technology that goes along with Envision, and through displaying my lessons on my smartboard, my students are able to be actively engaged, which just adds the extra motivation to be right on top of things during the lesson. And I also have a laptop in my classroom, which is so nice because the students that really need a little extra support, when I can't give them all of me, I'm able to support, you know, their personal goals through extra technology. I believe, you know, my students are going to be successful in my classroom, but I also believe that I need to teach them how to be successful outside of my classroom. So one of the things that we do at Fairview, and we're so fortunate, is that we have what we call Tune Up Tuesday, and on each of these Tune Up Tuesdays, we have the chance to practice a social skill. So those can be simple things, such as giving and receiving compliments. We teach them how to go through those steps and why those things are important, and then we also teach them simple things, simple life skills, like accepting no for an answer. In our classroom, and I love this picture because this is actually what we worked on this week, which was staying on task, and you can see that my student here was reading a passage, staying on task, and the other student was recognizing what he was doing. We have so many opportunities in our classroom, and I believe this is really important for success outside of school, is just to speak in front of each other, how to become good listeners as well. I believe that I need to keep my students actively engaged in their learning process. I'm so lucky to have learned about cooperative learning, and I embed that into every single one of my lessons in my classroom, so my students are up, they're moving, they're sharing, and it's all academic conversations, which is so good to hear. Through the use of EPR, my students are able to just give me personal feedback, though it's in a busy environment. I'm able to see and kind of gauge student understanding throughout the lessons, and also partner discussion. Anytime we're getting, going through a lesson, that partner discussion, especially at an ELL school, is so, so important. I also believe as a teacher that I'm equipped to meet the needs of my students. Envision is amazing. I've had the amazing opportunity to meet the needs of my struggling learners through the interventions that are provided with the program, but also meet the needs of my challenged students, which has been a really fun thing to experience. Fairview is a Title I and an ELL school, which means that my students get pulled out of the classroom to receive this extra support, which I could not live without. And my students also leave the classroom for speech services. During the day, we embed our MTSS interventions. I have many students on different levels, and MTSS allows me to meet those needs of my students. And like I said at the beginning, I also have three students who are receiving special education services, so I have paraprofessionals that come into my classroom, they support what's going on in the classroom, but then those students also get pulled during the Throughout the day, my students have to have the opportunity to read with each other. Those students have to have the opportunity to listen to fluent reading so they can hear what it sounds like to use expression. My students have opportunities to read independently and also receive that instruction on their reading level. While I'm having that small group instruction, my other students are participating in something that we call Daily Five, which just embeds all of those things all together. One of the things that my students love, and that is such a highlight of Fairview, is that we have our SOAR agreements, and our SOAR agreements are to stay safe, offer your best, accept responsibility, and have respect for all. You can see that we're all wearing our SOAR shirts, and this was actually a Tune Up Tuesday. So that's just an extra day where we practice those social skills, but it's also just a really good time for us to go through, you know, our behavior in our classroom. And with our SOAR agreements, our students get SOAR slips. So with the SOAR slips, and also we have marbles in our classroom when we get compliments from other teachers, so we get to plan parties, and some of those things look like ice cream parties. We've had an extra recess. Just recently, in the middle picture, we had a dress fancy party, which is really fun. And even on the morning announcements, our principal had kind of given a shout-out to our class for looking so fancy, and my students just were so proud of themselves. We get to do something like tomorrow, we're going to bring our stuffed animals to school. You know, these are things that are just a minimal part of our day, but it's so, so important for their success as well. One of the reasons that I love to teach in ALATHA is because every day I get to come to school, I get to come to Fairview, and I get to share my passion with my students. I get to give them 100% of me, and I know that if I'm giving 100% of me, that they're going to give me 100% back, and I really feel like that inspires my students, and I really feel like it encourages them to do their best. One of the amazing aspects of my job, too, is that I'm surrounded by other amazing Fairview teachers that just go above and beyond the typical calling of what they need to do. You can see that we have such a good time together, and, you know, we come together and we have to support each other. It's a really important part of teaching as well. I also am so fortunate that I'm provided with the opportunity to just continue to grow professionally every year, and I love getting to present with other teachers and also have a really good mentor myself. What I love the most are my students. Every day, when I get notes, every little thing from home that they bring me that's just for me, you know, seeing their growth, that's truly what it's all about. And I took some time to ask second graders what they love about second grade. Valerie, can you tell me what you love about second grade?
Well, my favorite thing is reading the chapter books because sometimes they're really funny, and I like to read and write.
So that was my friend Valerie. I also have Neveah. Neveah, I want you to tell me what your favorite thing is about second grade.
My favorite thing is that we have an awesome teacher, and my favorite thing is that we have Daily Five and everything like that, and we do stuff fun.
What do you like about Daily Five?
I like that we get to sit on the couch when we read the summer, and we get to do wordwork and stuff like that.
I have Jared. Jared, can you tell me what you love about second grade?
I love to write because sometimes you even say that I am so good at writing.
I say that about you? Do you like those compliments, Jared?
Yes.
When I sat him down to ask him that question, I would have never guessed in a million years that that was going to be his response, and when he did, it just almost brought tears to my eyes to know that that little thing that I say throughout the whole day is what means the most to him. I also have Marco. Marco, tell me what you love about second grade.
I love that we have frog for pets, and I get to feed them.
If you walk into my classroom, you will see that I'm a little bit of a frog fan, and we have a classroom pets, they're water frogs, and my students have jobs throughout the day, and one of their jobs is to get to feed the frogs, and they look forward to that. Every Monday when they come in, they check the jobs board, and when they get to see their name there, you know, we have so many other jobs, but that's the one that really matters to them. And my last student that I asked is Gloria. Gloria, what do you love about second grade?
I really love my field trip, and I love Daily Five.
I do believe, and I believe deep in my heart, that my students are prepared for their future. Thank you.
I'm sure that some Board members have comments or questions.
I'm ready. I wish I had had you as my teacher.
Thank you.
I had a question about a comment you made about sharing your second graders. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, during the day, we, as a Title I and an ELL school, we have students that come into our classroom that are just on so many different levels. So we are able to meet our students' needs better by dividing those students into groups that are based on their ability. So by being able to put them into different groups and share with the other second-grade teachers, we're really able to go from all areas to meet that one specific need. So what that would look like during the day, like for primetime, I would have five to 10 students, and maybe only two of those students would be mine, but they would be from the other second-grade classrooms. So my students come into the classroom, they already know which group they're in, and then they go to their primetime group. During primetime, it isn't just myself and the second-grade teachers that teach primetime. We also have all of the support staff in the school. So every single teacher in the school have hands-on, small groups during primetime, which is so, so important for our students. In guided reading, we have students that go all across second grade to be in a specific reading group on their level. So it's just, it's something that we feel as a school is really important to meet the needs of our students.
So this would be happening at all grade levels?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to express all my thanks to you. Your children have got to be very, very fortunate to have a teacher that has such a passion and enthusiasm for what they do, so thank you for what you do. You just inspired me, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share. My students are so excited to see themselves on TV. They're so excited.
Amanda, just one more comment. Also, in line with that, you know, you represent your profession so professionally.
Thank you.
And I know that you do a great job in your school. Thank you for coming, and thank you for the great job, but also thank you to all those other teachers out there who are just, who do the same thing that you do every day.
Yes.
This is just a microism of what we see across our district.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for representing our teachers.
Thank you.
Awesome job. You're a great representative for the teachers.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And along that same line, I like hearing that you're receiving the support you need from staff other than teachers.
Absolutely. I could not do my job if it was just me in my classroom. There's absolutely no way, just with the different needs that come into the classroom, there's no way. So it's so important at Fairview. We're so, so lucky that we have a staff that works together so well.
And what did you say your class size was?
I have 17 students this year. I've varied, though, in class size, anywhere from 17 to 25. So this year is just one of those years where I have a smaller class size, but like last year, I had 25, and we still do the same thing regardless of the class size.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next presentation probably won't be quite as much fun. I believe we have an update on our financial software program given by Connie Smith and Cassie Osborne and Mr. John Hutchison.
Thank you for those kind words. It's my pleasure to introduce this evening the next presentation. Connie Smith, our Director of Instructional Technology, and Cassie Osborne, our Controller. We'll be here in just a moment, but before they begin, I just wanted to let the Board know how incredibly fortunate we are to have these two heading up this project. It's been an enormous amount of work by them, the implementation team, the staff, staff out in the buildings doing their training, but it's all paid off. We have a system in place, we have a staff that's trained, and we're really poised for a seamless transition on January 3rd. I was talking to the Sun Guard project manager today, and he hasn't had a client, he said, that's been so engaged in the implementation process, they usually have to pull them along, and we've been pulling them, and it's just been great that everybody got behind the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Connie and Cassie.
Good evening. Tonight, Cassie and I are providing a brief update to the Board on the district's finance and human resources software implementation, and we want to provide a reminder of why the change was needed and where we are in the process. And additionally, we'll be providing just a glimpse into the feature functionalities of the software itself, and finally, we will provide an update as to where we are in the human resources side of the implementation as well. You may remember that we are currently operating with a legacy system developed in the early 1980s. Our current SIM software running on our AS400 system encompasses our financial, payroll, and human resources systems. These systems are rapidly becoming archaic and reaching an end-of-life status, and the familiar green screens of the 1980s and 1990s are what we have continued to make work. This legacy system has provided many limitations process-wise, as well as has provided multiple challenges technology. Some of these are listed before you, such as difficulty exchanging data with our other district programs, inaccuracies in payroll encumbrances, and a continual need to customize the system to meet the needs of the district, as well as state reporting requirements. Additionally, the legacy system has resulted in a loss of productivity during key periods of the month and year, and with the need to force all users off the system to be able to process payroll and month-end duties, as well as at year's end. For instance, just a few days ago, the message you are now viewing was sent to all applicable district staff, reminding them of the need to be off of the system for several hours at the end of the day. That brings us to where we are in the process, and as you remember, or you may remember, with the Board's approval, the district entered into contract negotiations with Sun Guard K-12 in February of 2012 to purchase its Business Plus software to meet the previously stated needs of the district. Subsequently, the core implementation team on the financial side began a thorough business process review to identify key areas of concern with current processes. And many of these staff are in attendance this evening, Jenny Hale and Jean Katzer, Merle Hastert and Scott Carpenter, and Brandon Lean could not be here this evening. This incredible team has to date put in collectively over 15,000 hours on this project on many of the tasks you are now viewing. We are hoping we don't have quite that many hours still yet to go. We've been configuring the software and testing it and testing it and testing it again for accuracy. We've rewritten over 12,000 general ledger account codes to be more in line with state reporting and to provide better extraction of data for reporting needs for the district. To date, we have trained over 350 end-users in the district, having just completed our last training this week. Throughout this implementation, we've taken the opportunity to review and modify where needed all business and financial services policies, procedures, and processes, and have provided an updated Business and Financial Services Policies and Procedures Manual to all applicable district staff attending our trainings. Our end-users have also been more than thrilled with the software change, as you can imagine, and at this time, Cassie Osborne, our district's controller, will demonstrate some of the feature functionalities in the Business Plus software.
And I'm just going to focus on just a few of the features that have made our end-users, as we have trained them, kind of say "oo" and "ah," and in the accounting and finance world, that does not happen very often, so these are things that we're very excited about. I'm going to show you a couple of reports and the features that come along with those, and then also one of our new features, which is called Punch-Out!, and I will demonstrate that in just a moment, and then we'll lead right into some of our workflow and the tracking of the requisition to PO process. Okay, and the first thing I have here is one of our budget-to-actual reports, and this looks very similar to what one of our high schools would see, and I just want to point out, too, that right now, we don't have any actual data in there. This is all just test-play data, so if you see some big, large numbers that may be scary, that's why. And one of the really neat features that we like is called Click, Drag, and Drill, and you'll see when I hover over an amount, my icon turns into a drill, and if I click on that amount, I drill down into more detailed transaction information. So I'm actually seeing any purchase requisitions or POs that have paid on that account number, any stores inventory orders, any journal entries that have happened there. So it's just a really quick way for our end-users to be able to answer some of the questions about what's going on in their general ledger accounts themselves, and of course, we're always very happy to help them, but this just puts these tools right at their fingertips. Where before, it was actually even hard for them to run their reports, and we, they would call the district office and ask us to run a report for them, where now, it's just a click of the mouse, and then they also have these great capabilities to drill into all of their transactions. And also with our CDD, we have the ability to drill down into images. So from this report, which is just a PO status report, which tells me everything I need to know about a PO, from the detail that was on that PO to invoice information when it was actually paid by our accounts payable department, and also a check number if accounts payable has processed a check. So one of the neat features I'm going to show here is that you'll see the invoice number on the report. When I hover over that, my icon turns to a camera, and I can click on that and actually drill down to the invoice image. So this is a really neat thing. A lot of times, our school buildings and departments would make copies of all of their invoices and keep those, and so when we have demonstrated this, we've really tried to stress that there's really not the need anymore for them to make those copies. All of that, if they want to actually see an invoice image, it's right here in their reports, so kind of in a way, we're going a little more paperless, so. And then the next feature I'm going to demonstrate is Punch-Out!, which I've already entered my account number into the screen and the building code where I want my order shipped. But what Punch-Out! is, is we're actually, from inside of Business Plus, we can punch out to another vendor and do basically- out to another vendor and do basically cyber purchasing or web shopping that we're so used to with our shopping cart and adding products. And I'll walk through that. Here, we have Office Max set up, and right now, that's the only vendor that we have set up for Punch-Out!, but we anticipate as we get more comfortable with the system and as vendors come along that we do business with and can get possibly some preferred pricing, we can add more. All I have to do is click here on Shop, and it punches me out to the Office Max website. And this may take just a second. Okay. It's gonna make me enter again. Okay. So now I'm punching out to the Office Max website, and all of our Olathe School District pricing with Office Max is available. Once I get to this website, I can add items to my cart. So I'll add a couple of binders. Can search for other items. Now I'll add a couple of new items to my cart. And then the checkout process, when I decide that my order is complete and I click Checkout, and all of my order will pull back into Business Plus and create a purchase requisition. So it's a really neat feature where then I can route that requisition through the approval process. So the account number I entered was an Olathe South account, so it would route to the Olathe South principal for approval. Route to the purchasing department, then, where they would then submit that order to Office Max electronically. And...
It's not gonna go because of...
Oh, pop-ups. All right. Technology. Okay. Let me get back to... Oops. All right. All right. So I just quickly was going to show a purchase requisition screen as an example of what that requisition would come into, since our pop-ups are not quite working, and it didn't allow us to fully demonstrate how that works. But that Office Max order would actually come into this screen so that you would see, you would see all of the items that were in my shopping cart would then come through and show as items listed on the screen as items that I want to order. And then the final thing I want to demonstrate is just the workflow process is very, very automated. So you'll see over here, this is a requisition that was already submitted into workflow. And you'll see that the system tracks each step of that approval process along the way. And since we're in a test mode, a lot of the names that you will see here that have done the approvals aren't exactly as accurate as they would be in the real world. But that's one thing that we're very excited about. And one also, other neat thing about the workflow is that we've set up a lot of automatic email notifications where once, like a secretary or a bookkeeper enter a purchase requisition, once it has passed all approvals by their budget managers, the purchasing department has turned that requisition into a purchase order. At that point in time, they receive an email back automatically from the system telling them that their requisition has been approved, and it is now PO number one, two, three, four, or five. So we're very excited about some of those automatic notifications that happen. Also, there are some notifications set up that we like to call nagifications, where if a budget manager has not approved a requisition, if it's been sitting in their queue for over two days, then they will receive an email reminding them that they have an item that they need to act upon. So that really helps a lot of our internal business and finance staff out a lot, especially Accounts Payable, where they were on the phone a lot of the times calling these people to remind them to approve things. And so that really, the system does a lot of things for us now, so we're just really excited about it. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Connie now.
So to close the presentation this evening, we want to let you know that not only on the financial side are we ready to go live in January, but we are progressing right along on the HR payroll side of the implementation as well. And mirroring the finance side, we've conducted a business process review with all HR and payroll staff and have identified many areas of possible improvement in processes. We're in the process of configuring that software as well, and have recently, just this past month, completed a trial payroll where the Performa and Business Plus perfectly matched that of ours in the SIM system. And again, we're anticipating better reporting and tracking of financial and human resource data in Business Plus as well. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, John, I take back what I said. That was very nice. I think, though, to really get the true impact, you should have given us an AS400 screen just for comparison. Any comments or questions?
I have a question about, Cassie, how many vendors are currently on the Punch-Out!
Currently, we just have one. And nationwide, I believe there are about ten vendors nationwide that even have that capability to provide that kind of service to us. But the purchasing department is actively looking for more vendors that we can provide with our end-users with that functionality.
Is it something our more, our top ten vendors, we could ask that they are put on? Or is it, or do they have to buy software on their end?
I do have to have a specific technology capability with their system, and we're actually working with School Specialty as one of our vendors as well, that we'll probably have set up within the next month for that as well.
And once the purchase request has been approved and then it's a PO, does it automatically order it from the one vendor that we have? So there's no follow-up from the user after approval, other than it just automatically is seamless? And you get a confirmation email then, saying it's done?
Yep.
That's great.
Walk me through the process a little bit. You've got a principal, it's got, what, two hundred teachers? Each of them making requests? How often does he have to make those approvals? And, you know, what's gonna be the logjam in the system? Where are we gonna break down?
Well, most of the time, a secretary or bookkeeper are actually entering their requisitions, and usually, they sit down and do several of them at one time, where it would be more of a, probably a batch-at-a-time approval, rather than all through the week, the principal would be receiving twenty requisitions to approve, you know, throughout a day. One of the capabilities that we did have, that we talked about and decided against, was every time a principal had a requisition to approve, they would get an email alerting them. So we've kind of backed off, I mean, we have a lot of room to do things with those email notifications, but we didn't want to bombard people where they just started ignoring all of those. So, you know, I really don't see it as being any different as it is now. I mean, the volume should remain fairly consistent to what they're approving now.
Is it set up so the principal can decide how they want to handle it?
Yeah. They, and a lot of times, that's a communication between the principal and the bookkeeper or the secretary that are entering their requisitions. A lot of times, there may be a principal that logs in every morning to just see if there's anything waiting. A lot of times, they wait for that communication to come from their secretary or bookkeeper to tell them that they have something, so. I don't, I don't see a whole lot of change probably at that step of the process.
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. Seeing what you're able to show us there, I mean, it's like going from Flintstone Accounting to Star Wars. And with that, though, I mean, you know, one of the things that we want to continue to look at are some of the efficiencies. And, you know, one of the ones I was just looking at, when you talk about that drill down, and I know we don't want to go back and track all this just to be able to account for what the expenditure was for the software, but those in itself, so like a drill down in the past, if somebody had to go back and look at an invoice or look at a particular item, and they had to call someplace and do all that, that's five, ten, thirty minutes worth of time versus point and click, and there it is. And now you can answer the question. So, I mean, those are some of the things that I hope that we'll continue to look at, we'll try to find those efficiencies, because again, this was a big expenditure of money, but it absolutely has taken us, and getting the school system up to where the rest of the world really is, away from the green screens and maybe able to be more productive in the future. But I would like to just continue to watch that and see, okay, where are some of the other efficiencies, so we helped, I don't know, at least justify and offset some of the expense that we had for this.
Couple of questions. The first one is on payroll. And I know you're aware of this, nothing is more sensitive to an employee than their check. So I hope that we're taking all the precautions to make sure that when you roll that out, that everything is correct on the pay system, and we won't have any discrepancies in regards to what employees are getting paid.
Yes, absolutely. As I mentioned, we have, we ran the Performa this past, actually on September 30th paycheck, and have taken in consideration all deductions and all of those kinds of things, and have checks matching in the systems right now. We're working with approximately a hundred test employees in the district from all different areas, certified, classified substitutes, all the different scenarios that might produce a different type of check amount. And so we are quite confident that we're taking a look at that, and then we're adding on the additional employees and training staff internally to handle the entering of that data, so that we are making...
What's the timeframe on rolling that out, then? To the whole, to the entire staff?
July 1st is go-live for HR payroll.
Second question probably would be for John. I heard earlier in the comments about interface with other organizations, and I was in Topeka this weekend for KASB, and I attended the Department of Education presentation, and there's a lot of angst in Topeka, and probably also the Department of Education, about interfacing, being able to see our budget clearly and interface with what they do. Is this gonna allow us to be more user-friendly to the Department of Education than we have been in the past?
It's really based on their capabilities. We'd be an open architecture. Any of the systems really could be designed to talk to each other. If they want to automate that process, right now, their entire process is spreadsheet-driven when we go through the budget process. So we could send a flat file of information easily out of our system, as long as they could receive it. So we're set up for any change they make.
Some discussion about building-based budgeting and expenditures, and I know we've talked about that in the past, and that would be a really expensive proposition for us if we had to implement that kind of accounting system.
We've established the account structure that way. We may not be as deep in detail as they may want. We could do it. It would be more in the staff time it takes to reconcile and make sure everything went to the exact location. It puts a bit of burden on HR as movement happens among the buildings, say in the custodial ranks, having to constantly switch that in the payroll records. But the system's capable.
Does the system give us more capability to be more flexible? And if that were ever a mandate?
Absolutely.
Was that legislated, we'd be able to do that better under this system than we were the old?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. I think Miss Veltor has a band concert to get to real briefly, so let's go ahead, and we're gonna take our comfort break now. Return here at seven o'clock. During the break, I encourage you to visit the children's shoe fund in the back of the room. Thank you. You guys are good. Next on our agenda, we have recognitions and awards, and Ms. Maggie Cole is going to be leading them, I believe, with Ms. Ashley's assistance.
Good evening. As you can see from this packed house, we have numerous accomplishments to recognize tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with two business partners. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development to come forward to help with these recognitions. Our first business partner is of the Olathe Noon Optimist Club, which continues to be a strong annual supporter of students in our schools. The forty-eight-member volunteer-based organization provides dictionaries, scholarships, and recognitions for students throughout Olathe. This year, the Noon Optimist Club purchased $3,000 worth of dictionaries for all fourth grade students through a generous donation from a Poland family. In addition, Olathe's Got Talent is an annual event to showcase student musical talent. In 2012, $9,000 was awarded for student scholarships to talent show winners, with an additional $3,000 donated to the Olathe South Music Department, as it was the site house for 2012. Other noteworthy projects include the club's support to Olathe's back-to-school outreach, where gift cards and toiletries are given to students in need. A first-time project this semester included a commitment to provide monthly food to all students at the Choices Alternative Education Program. Choices teacher Tina Solers shared that there were cheers of thankfulness in the classroom when Optimists delivered Thanksgiving meals to each student last month. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for the annual financial and volunteer commitment to the Olathe Public Schools. I'd like to ask Dennis Bavereka, Olathe Noon Optimist President, and Diane Gossage, past president, to come forward to be recognized. Thank you very much. Our next business partner recognition is of the Olathe YMCA. The Olathe YMCA partnered with the school district in offering after-school soccer at three of our middle schools. Approximately two hundred students participated. The Y recognized this need to offer structure, instruction, and a little bit of competition for students at Indian Trail, Oregon Trail, and Santa Fe Trail Middle Schools. The Y provided the soccer clinic expertise, set up the expectations, rules, and brackets. For many of these students, this was one of their first opportunities for organized soccer coaching and play. On November 8th, the five-week program culminated with a playoff and championship game at Odeck. It was a beautiful afternoon full of high-energy, excited soccer players. Indian Trail girls and the Oregon Trail boys took home the championship trophies. I'd like to ask the following individuals to come forward to be recognized. Tricia Minehold, Vice President, South District YMCA of Greater Kansas City. Bubba Gadart, Olathe YMCA Sports Director. YMCA Community Board Chair Rebecca Summers. And Assistant Superintendent Erin Dugan, who also serves on the YMCA Community Board. Thank you for all you do. Thank you all very much. Next, we will honor a group of district staff members for their hard work on the 2012 United Way campaign. Would the following United Way committee members please come forward? Lane Green and Nancy Cheatham from the Education Center. And three other board, three other committee members couldn't be here tonight, but we want to recognize them, and they're Beth Esco from Olathe North, Becky Verbus from Indian Trail, and Corbin Trimble from Bentonwood Elementary. This year's campaign total of $108,777.36 represents an increase over last year's total. In the fifth year, the district has surpassed the $100,000 mark. Representatives at each building collected pledges and several organized special events that generated additional funds. Close to 2,000 employees participated this year. Thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you very much. Next, we'd like to recognize Spencer Buff, Olathe North Senior. Spencer, if you could come forward, along with Olathe North Band Director Justin Love and Principal David Morford. Spencer was selected to be a member of the 2013 U.S. Army All-American Marching Band. He will join an elite group of musicians who will perform during halftime of the U.S. Army All-American Bowl at the Alamo Dome in January in San Antonio, Texas. The U.S. Army All-American Marching Band recognizes the top 125 high school senior marching musicians and color guard members from across the country, showcasing their talents during the largest celebration of high school football in America. Congratulations, Spencer, and the... Congratulations, Spencer, on this wonderful accomplishment. And Spencer, is your family here tonight? If so, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Next, we will recognize the Olathe North varsity softball team. Might stand. Would the team come forward along with their coach Frank Barnes, their assistant coach Bree Edyer, and athletic director Jason Herman? Is he here tonight? Okay. All right. The National Fast Pitch Coaches Association named the Olathe North High School Softball Team the number-one ranked high school academic team in the nation, based on GPA. The team had an overall GPA of 3.89 on a 4.0 scale. The team's GPA ranked highest among all schools, college, or high school on this scale. In addition, all students on the team were named Academic All-Americans by the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association. Congratulations to each of you and your success. And girls, are your families here? Because we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Softball, family.
Just take a second, the girls have time, and they want to share this award with the teachers and staff at Olathe North that made this possible. So I'm going to have the seniors give it to Principal Morford.
Next, we will recognize Audrey Judd, Olathe Northwest Junior. Audrey, if you could come forward along with Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Jay Novacek. Audrey recently won the Kansas State Championship in girls' golf. She beat out 91 other golfers at the state championship meet that was held on October 15th in Wichita. Her score of 74 was three strokes better than the second-place finisher. Congratulations. And Audrey, is your family here tonight? We'd love for them to stand as well.
Yes, my mother, my sister, and my grandma.
Next, we will recognize the Olathe East Gymnastics Team. Would the team along with their coach Julie Thomas Beja and Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Craig Taylor please come forward? The Olathe East Gymnastics Team won the Kansas State Championship, which was held in Lawrence on October 23rd. East scored 106.775 points, besting second-place Lawrence Free State by almost two points. Allison Meads, and if you could raise your hand when I say your name. Allison Meads took first in the all-around competition with teammate Darby Gertzema taking third place. Darby? There you go. Allison took first in the balance beam and floor exercise. In the uneven parallel bars, Allison took second with teammate Darby placing third. And Allison took first in the vault with teammate Darby taking third place. And Allison, if you would come forward, we have a little recognition for you. Allison was crowned the all-around state champion for the third straight year. Even more, she was a state champion in the vault for the second time in three years, a state champion in the balance beam for the second year in a row, and a state champion in the, in floor exercise for the third year in a row. But congratulations to the entire team. And girls, are your families here tonight? We'd love for them to stand as well. Our final recognition tonight is of yet another state-winning team from Olathe East. I'd like to ask the Olathe East Cross Country Team to come forward along with their coach The Olathe East Girls Cross Country Team won the state championship, which is their fourth since 2006, and their third in the past three years. The East girls beat the second-place team by 11 points and the third-place team by 24 points. Senior Brenna McDonald led the way for East by placing fifth overall as an individual, and freshman Allison Vermillion also finished in the top 20 runners. And you know the drill, are your families here tonight? We'd love for them to stand as well. Congratulations and your success. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. Am I on now? Okay. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to, in an effort to respect their privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. I don't believe anyone has signed up in advance, but we have a moment to hear public comment if you wish to make one. All right. Seeing none, we will move along. On our consent agenda, we have our minutes, our financial and accounting reports, a human resources report, a couple of student trips, a Head Start work plan, and mileage reimbursement rates for 2013. Are there any comments or questions for Board members or items to be pulled for individual Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.07 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Spelter? Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under bids, contracts, and agreements, we're revisiting our library media and textbook management software purchase. Are there any questions or comments? Very good. Then I would entertain a motion.
Mrs. Spelter gone? She didn't, did she recuse herself or why she's a no vote?
Um, she did, she did not have any comments to me ahead of time, so I think, let's go ahead and, are you, are you comfortable taking the vote without her?
Is she here? No.
She had to sit next door. Her son's first band concert was tonight. He's the first two numbers, and she thought she would be back right away.
So without a recu, if she doesn't recuse herself, she will be a no vote. Just letting you know. If she recused, I didn't hear.
All right. Well, I think we're safe to go ahead and make the vote then. So if someone would make a motion.
I would move to approve the proposal from Follett Software Company for an initial purchase with conversion, implementation, training, and five years of software maintenance and support for a total price of $444,314.73.
Second.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Motion carries. We also have marching band uniforms for Olathe North. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to accept the bid provided by Stanbury for a total of $94,611.84.
Ms. Hibs, will you let the record reflect that Ms. Spelter has returned? Lea, do we have a motion right now for the band uniforms at Olathe North? Did you have any comments or questions before we vote?
No, thank you.
All right. Then please call the rolls.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
The motion carries. Onto our other action item, the math curriculum for K through 8 middle school and high school math courses. Any comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
Well, I move to approve K-8 mathematics, middle school, and select high school math courses curriculum as presented.
Ms. Hibs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under future action items, we have several, several different items, which you can see on the screen. I'm sure that we have some comments or questions on some of these from Board members.
I was going to say, just a couple of quick comments. I'll just zip a couple down the list and then see where we might be. The carpet tile installation, air filters, concrete, asphalt, as you know, just so the public knows, those are bids that we lock in at this time of year, so as we get ready to do summer projects, we have a, a good bid that we can use. So that's very typical for the Board to do at this time. The wireless hardware bid is part of a project that technology's working on now, so that we can let staff members and students and others bring their own devices to get onto our system. And again, this is for updating the density of our wireless equipment, which again, we're trying to do this the very best way. We talked to a lot of people and they, some people have jumped into this bring your own device, and they haven't upgraded their wireless equipment and have had troubles in terms of slowing the system down and people able to get on, so that's really positive for us. The trade bids that are listed here was just the announcement that we will be bringing to the Board as soon as they are available and turn, as we turn the corner into the first of the year, for the seven projects that we have going on. So you're very aware of that, obviously, because those projects are underway now, but those trade bids will be coming into you. And also then for the actual sale of the bond to finance the rest of the qualified school construction bonds that we have, the QSCABs, and the remaining authority that we have from the 2007 bond issue. So again, an interesting process as we get ready to sell those, that John will work through with the Business Department, and we'll get a new rating for our bonds, and so we'll be bringing all of that information to you. Requests for professional audit services that we've talked about in the past, we go through that five-year cycle, and so it is time that we put out an RFP and bring in companies and see who might take that new project on for us in terms of a contract. And then finally, we're going to talk just a little bit about another future action item, when that'd be the international student trip to Japan.
I have a question about the audit, RFP. How is the final decision made on that? Is that strictly a staff decision, or is that something brought to the Finance Committee and, and the decision is made in Finance Committee?
Yeah, it'll be brought to the Finance Committee, so that you have first, first access to that and then brought to the full Board.
I would like to talk about the student trip to Japan. I know that several Board members had questions centering around time away from school, school liability, cost to the district, so could you make a few comments about them?
I could. Our program in the district received notification November 15th that we'd been accepted. This is an institute that's tied in with Japanese government, but it's in the, in the United States, in Seattle. And again, the opportunity really, that it's outstanding for kids to get the chance possibly to take a two-week trip over to Japan. It's an all-expans paid trip for 23 students and two chaperones. We are following our regular procedure when this comes to us, because we usually do something with the Board on all trips in terms of future action item and then action the next month. It's different for us in the fact that it is international travel. And it's different for us, and I believe, we've been digging back through the past, I'm not sure we've had a student trip begone over 10 school days, so that's again, a little different for us. We have had international travel in the past, programs that have gone abroad for study, but normally, spring break would be the most of it, Christmas break maybe, or, but for sure, summertime. So this, again, just a little bit different. As you will know, in the fairly recent past, the Board of Education actually pulled an international trip for one of our programs. At that time, a lot of uncertainty in that part of the world, and so we chose to postpone and not go at that time. From there, the discussion, as you know, if we, as we've tried to bring information to you, has been all over the place, from great opportunity to, to awfully fast to consider to once-in-a-lifetime, to liability questions, exposure, the positiveness of being expense-paid for our kids for, you know, for the, what's the real reason that we're going and where does the money come in from and so forth. So again, that's open for discussion tonight. One of the pieces that, again, that was just three weeks ago tonight, that acceptance was notified of the district that we were, had the chance to maybe participate in this. You know, some details are still coming, and they're trying to lay out a timeline that would have to be pretty fast, but it's my understanding tonight now that there would have to be a decision made in December, that they have to have roster turned in for all the kids by, I believe, December 18th is the date that sticks in my mind. So again, extremely fast. We have tried to look at the liability issue from several standpoints and have had Scott review some things. The institute indicates that school districts can be waived of all liability. There's still some question, I think, by our attorney in terms of if we have staff members who are under contract and on the trip, whether you can really, you know, separate yourselves from it being considered a school trip and what the liability might be. It's my understanding, and one of, one of you shared, that there are additional policies that you can get sometimes for liability exposure when you travel internationally. So from there, be interested in your questions and how you'd like to consider this tonight.
Well, I'd like to say that for myself, I think this is a great opportunity for students, something that as a parent, I would, I would choose for my child. And so I think as, as a Board, we have an obligation to consider it very seriously because it does offer a lot of benefit to our students. However, we do get hung up on some of these issues. For me, liability is a big one. And so my question has centered around, how do we separate this from a school trip? Is there, is there a way that this could not be sponsored by the district? We could somehow release the employees for the time they need to be away? But, you know, it would be a parent's choice to pull their kid out of school for the opportunity to go. So is there, is there some way that we can do this without sponsoring it?
Right. Again, I think that's possible. Again, I think that's possible. From the get-go, you can try and sign things and make the wording on everything that's looked at by parents that says, "This is not a USD, Latha Public Schools trip."
So, if that was the case, then we don't need to take action?
Right. If that would be the case, if we say, "It is not a school district trip. We are in no way supporting this," then I suppose that you don't take action. So much of this has come pretty quick, and, again, we're not practiced at taking international travel like this very often. The question is, was it a group, a program, that is going? And I don't think the answer is yes. I think it is an invitation for 23 students and two chaperones to go. It's not like all of our teachers are the Japanese program, or all of our students are going. Only 23 can go. So, that might start to lend itself to say, "It's not a school trip." Again, we still have questions, I think, and have not really had a chance to talk with payroll or anybody else, or, I mean, HR, to say, "These teachers are under contract. How can you say it's not, you know, school-sponsored?" That's the difficulty, I think, for us. We don't really have anything in HR policies that would say teachers can be gone 10 days. I mean, it'd have to be some special situation that we could account for that, which you could if we wanted to do that.
Assuming that train of thought, I understand that there may be a reciprocal arrangement involved, that there would be students coming over from Japan to this country. Is that a correct understanding?
It is. And I believe the timing was such on one of the chances to host kids that that has been taken away. So, it's not like we... At one point, I think the schedule was we'd return and host the next day or something. But I think it is still scheduled that we would have a group from Japan at some time during the spring.
So, if, assuming that we go along with what Amy is suggesting, then how does that hosting work out? Because it appears to me that they would be visiting in our schools, they would be staying with families, and that makes a direct connection to the school district if we are going to organize that effort.
I would think that'd be correct.
Dr. Barry, I believe I saw an email this afternoon saying that that requirement had been waived.
The one trip, or exchange that I'm aware of. But, Dr. Shear, is there another trip that we'd be... I mean, another group we're sponsoring on a visit? Ha, got you to the microphone.
The group that would be coming is not associated with this trip.
Okay.
It's the trip... The students from Japan that would be coming are the students that we've had an exchange program in place for a number of years.
Don't go too far.
Well, board members, I suppose we need your thoughts because I believe they need an answer in the next two weeks before we meet again.
So, the only possibility is during school time. There's not any alternative dates, summer dates? That's correct. It was explored, and they were told, no, that this is the time that we would have to travel.
I personally think that this is a chance of a lifetime for our students, and we're a cutting-edge district. We look for opportunities to provide creative ways for them to learn, and I think you couldn't put a dollar amount of value on this. Is there a way to... Any cost associated with the subs, if it could be absorbed by the parents, which would be just a fraction of the cost compared to the trip? They could do fundraisers, or... My main thing is if it doesn't cost us much, or hopefully, anything. And then, our exposure. And I do have experience... My daughter went to England in sixth grade, England and Scotland, with people-to-people. And there was a pretty extensive insurance policy that we purchased that, you know, you can never stop people from suing, but it seemed to basically release everybody from liability. And I don't know if there... Harlan, is there a policy that can be created for that?
I believe there would be.
So, if we could just facilitate, you know, having the parents absorb that cost and then, you know, limit our exposure?
I think that could be a parent's choice. It's, you know, it's for evacuation and for emergencies, trip insurance. The other part, in terms of substitutes to cover the teachers, if you wanted to say it was not a cost that the district should take on, about $2,240. Is it doable? Yes. It's awkward. I'm not sure we've ever done that, where we've had a group fundraise to pay the substitute cost, but I assume it could be done. You know, I don't know what happens if they come up, you know, short, and then what do we do? But I guess it would be feasible.
I mean, it's something to think about if we're worried about setting case precedents.
Right.
That would, you know, also set case precedence.
What happens?
I have a list of comments. While I don't disagree that this is an incredible opportunity for these students, I was a German teacher, taught at the high school and junior college level. I traveled abroad while I was studying at the University of Kansas and spent two summers in Germany. So, I totally support foreign travel when you're studying a foreign language because the cultural piece is an integral part of learning the language. I think our enthusiasm, though, for this opportunity is overshadowing what the real issue is here. I don't think this is about this trip, or it's about these students. This is a policy decision. And we have a field trip policy in place, and it has been carefully evaluated over years, and we have stuck to that policy in approving other field trips. I think by countering that policy without careful consideration of everything involved, not just the merits of the trip and the opportunity for the kids, but everything involved, I think it would be a mistake for us to make a hurried decision. And I am bothered by the fact that this is a hurried decision. If this is such a great opportunity, why didn't we know about this in March? Because trips were going beginning in June of 2012, and the students could have gone June, July, and August when we weren't in session, and it would have been a moot issue with the missing two weeks of school. So, when it says, "And they're the only school in Kansas that's been approved," I had kids in band, I had kids in sports, and I know what enticements are out there to get kids and parents to support special projects. And they do everything they can to entice you into these projects. Yeah, it looks good for our kids to have this on their resume when they go to college, saying they've spent two weeks in Japan. And yes, it looks good for our school district to say we had 23 students go over to Japan for two weeks. And it's great for the company because they can say, "Hey, look, we got these kids from Olathe, Kansas, to go on this trip." So, flattering, yeah, it can have an effect. But I think we have to evaluate the merits of what we're really looking at here. And for me, one of the biggest issues is the precedent that we're setting by making this decision. So, are we going to say that every year, one of the high schools gets to send a group of students on a two-week trip, and so we just rotated from school to school? And if we do that, how do we decide which program gets to go? Is it Japanese, or is it gonna be French? Is it gonna be Spanish? Is it gonna be the history classes, and they can go to Europe? Is it the language arts? How do you choose? Is it gonna be competitive? And the losers, how are they going to feel? How do you decide on the merits of that particular decision? And as I said, I think the timing and being rushed into this just doesn't feel right. But I am most concerned about rushing into it and setting the precedent and the kind of request that we're going to get going forward. Now, if we decide to go along with what Ms. Martin has suggested and the parents pay for the trip, I guess there's nothing that we can do about that. But again, you set the precedent, and maybe next year, we've got the Spanish students that come up, and they want to spend two weeks in Spain. And then, maybe there'll be three or four groups that come up next year and say that. How do we evaluate? And then, the teachers, who are going to have to work with students who are gone for two weeks? It says in our presentation, "These are high-achieving students." Yeah, they're high-achieving students. I give them that. But this takes special effort on the part of the teachers to put class schedules together, to make up assignments, and we're asking a lot of our teachers to do that. So, in summation, I cannot support the request for all those reasons.
If we say no tonight, do they not go? Can they still go by themselves?
In our field trip policies, the second part of it, for non-school-sponsored field trips, group of individual teacher or teachers, travel agency or other individual or association, but it is not sponsored by the school or Olathe district, that they can put that into motion with... There's some things here that they have to do by policy, informing participants and parents that while it's educational, it is not sponsored, approved, or sanctioned by the school district. Notices and announcements and distribution of the literature about the trip, you know, have to state that as well. They assign a non-school-sponsored field trip release and waiver form. I mean, so there are certain things they would have to comply with, but it would be taking a non-school-sponsored trip. Parents would have to excuse their kids for the time. The part that we'd have to wrestle with is two teachers saying, "We'd like to be gone for 10 days," and there's really no provision in our agreement for that kind of leave. But it's not to say we couldn't work something out.
Are we still talking about 10 days? I thought it had switched.
And once we thought that it was changed, and it would be five days over spring break, but then it changed back to the original time, and it's 10 school days. That's my understanding, I think, still.
Dr. Barry, what is our policy currently in regards to international trips?
It would be that it's handled as a non-school or sanctioned trip. For all... Olathe Public Schools student groups traveling internationally in conjunction with an international cultural exchange will participate under the auspices of Board Policy IFCB Field Trip Guidelines for Non-School Sponsored Field Trips.
Interpret that for me.
That, at this change, when we got several years ago, this is from the spring of 2010, and worried about international travel, it said, "We're gonna step out of that business," which a number of our school districts, neighboring districts do in terms of school-sponsored. Still lots of trips that go, language-oriented and others, but they are functioning as non-school-sponsored field trips.
So, that's what our policy says?
That's what it says.
I see no reason to change it for this.
And again, these are guidelines that were written up in 2010, but it says, "Under the auspices of Board Policy IFCB," which is what I read to you, first of all, about non-school district sanctioned trips.
And what makes this difference is it's two weeks in the school year, right?
That's correct.
That's the catch right there.
Most of those indicate that it would be over spring break, holidays, and so forth. The policy says, "We can't control the travel of our teachers and parents and kids during those times when they're off school in particular."
I see no reason to change the policy for this particular trip. And I agree with Ms. Ashley that anytime something comes to me in a hurry... My daddy always told me, "If it's a good deal today, it's a good deal tomorrow." And anytime I'm rushed into something, my first thing is to say no. And so, I would not feel comfortable voting for it in this particular case either. If they've got the opportunity, and they want to go through the efforts to do it as a non-sanctioned school district thing, then I would be willing to work out something for the substitute teachers. But that's, I think, that's as far as I would be willing to go, so...
So, would it be unexcused absences, then? For the students? Right. Well, I think their parents can excuse them for any reason. The parents would have to agree to it. It's really the staff that's a sticking point?
Right. Does it make any difference from this organization, whether it's school-sponsored or not? I mean, is that... No. And in fact, they have some indication in their literature that they would release a school district from any liability, which, again, as we've read through it, it sounds very good, and it's better than not having that. But it all depends on how it's interpreted. And again, if something happens, you never know who they're gonna come back against. But they would release a school district. So, that plays in line with, if you wanted to say this was a non-sanctioned trip by the... Not sanctioned by the school district. And how many Japanese students do we currently have?
122, I think. Right?
Do we know? Do we know how many students are enrolled?
I thought it was 122 when we approved the text.
It was 200. How do we... And sanctioned or not sanctioned, how do we determine the 23 that get to go? The teachers have already worked on a process, kind of a rubric, that would talk about, you know, a number of things that they would help select those students. Again, top-notch students that would be getting a chance to go. Which, my concern would be, if it's school sanctioned, we could do that. If it's not school sanctioned, how do you decide who gets to go and who doesn't get to go if it's not school sanctioned? And that, I'm just, I don't know. That would be a concern there, of how you make that choice. And if I'm that 24th child that wants to go, and they don't let you go, just something we would have to think about. Well, they would have to think about that. Not school district sanctioned would stay out of that, obviously. Right.
Dr. Barry, I want to come back. I was thinking that we were gonna be taking action on this in January, so I...
That's what we thought.
So, I have given it some thought. My initial reaction is that I would be supportive of this for all, a lot of the reasons that have already been suggested this evening. But it bothers me if it's contrary to the policy that we established in 2010. And I will admit that I'm not aware of that. I was gonna become aware of that sometime in the next 30 days. But now that I'm aware of what our policy says, can you... I want to make sure I'm really clear on that. What does our policy say about... Basically, we said, "We're taking international trips off of the being sponsored by the school district."
This was written guidelines in May of 2010 that were presented at a board meeting in the very bottom section about Olathe Public Schools students traveling internationally, that student groups traveling internationally in conjunction with an international cultural exchange, with this would apply, will participate under the auspices of Board Policy IFCB Field Trips Guidelines for Non-School Sponsored Field Trips. And that part of the policy, we've had for some time. Now, that part of the policy, as it says, "We work with them." It's all non-school. They have to indicate that, those little pieces that I said that they have to make sure and cover. The only other thing it says in here is that it does normally pertain to weekends, school holidays, and over the summer vacation. So, that's the little piece that's slightly different from the current policy.
So, to interpret that for myself and for our citizens, basically, we're saying we're out of the... We are out of the business of sponsoring international trips for students.
Yes.
Very sponsoring them, yeah.
Unless we would go back and, at some point, study that and change policy. But that's pretty much in line with what neighboring school districts are doing, I believe.
It goes back to the old adage, "Every decision has unintended consequences." And that's an unintended consequence of that policy. So, we would have to make an exception to the policy if we were going to approve this trip.
A school-sponsored trip, yes.
Because we're basically, we're stepping outside of the policy.
Right. It would be in line with something that we have done previously, though, before this.
But then, you know, we, in 2008, I specifically remember this, in 2008, we were... We became anxious, concerned about international trips because...
Believe somebody with an insurance background, they get anxious.
Probably so. No doubt about it. I'm certain, I'm sure that that's the case. And he's disappointed in that this age of tonight, but... Because, you know, every situation is different. And every, you know, and some of those trips were to places in the world that were not very safe. And we certainly saw what happened with the school district not too far from here when they went to a country, and it was unfortunate thing occurred. And I think that's what we hear as school board members, and those kind of things terrorize us. This is certainly of a different type of trip than that. I really wish we had 30 days where we could talk about this and talk about making a provision in our policy where the board would have room for exceptions. In other words, the board could evaluate a trip and make an exception based upon the trip itself, rather than just make a carte blanche statement like we've done there in that all trips are forbidden. And that's just... I'm gonna request that we go back and revisit the policy, but that's neither here nor there for tonight. It is what it is for tonight, so...
I think I'm confused because I think our policy allows for it. That's what I'm reading.
It allows for non-sanctioned trips.
Yes.
Correct.
So, if this took place as a non-sanctioned trip, then it is allowed by our policy.
The only piece that it says that is different from what our policy is about the weekends, holidays, and summers, it is actually taking place during the school year. But otherwise, it falls in line with what we have. You're correct.
But if the parents decided that they wanted to go on the trip, it wouldn't be any different if they decided we're gonna take them out four days before spring break and go to Disney World.
That's correct.
But they're not taking 23 of them?
I don't think we can... And Ms. Ashley said they're not taking 23. I don't know that we could put, lay down the law and say, "Well, you know, you can't go." I mean, if they decide they want to go...
I don't know how... It matters if it's one or 23 students.[1745.01] That's every family's decision to make if they want to participate.
Then again, you're right. Then it just comes back to the release of the teachers who are under contract during that time.
And I fully agree, it should be the parents' decision, not ours. So take it off the table from us. If they want to go, let them go.
So if, so if-
As a non-sanctioned.
If the teacher went ahead and continued with plans to go, it would not be in violation of our policy? Is that what-
The trip or the teacher being gone?
The trip.
The trip would not be, other than the little piece about the time of year. It says, what did I read?
The weekends, holidays.
Correct. Weekends during school holidays over the summer vacation. But it's, it's, in the statement, it says, "The board recognizes it has little or no authority to regulate the travel of teachers and students on these times." And actually, that could be extended. We have very little, if, if any, authority to regulate the travel of students anytime during the school year if parents say that, "I'd like to take my kid and go on a trip."
Are the, are the teachers required for this?
Two chaperones are required.
So again, if it's not school-sponsored and two parents decided to do it, this is all on their own at this point because I'm assuming this organization would still offer this opportunity possibly?
The teacher in the audience is swallowing hard right now.
I'm sure that they are, but just trying, again, trying to find out if there's an opportunity outside of anything to do with the school district, is there still an opportunity for them to go if they did it that way?
Yeah. Again, this new ground for us. I'd like to think that if kids were traveling to Japan and our district had at least been contacted, not a school district trip, but our, we had two teachers that had a chance to go along, I'd like to think we'd work something out. Now, it, it depends how you view that, whether they're going to be gone with 23 kids and leave back behind 180 kids for two weeks. I think that's a way to look at it as well in terms of obligation, so, but I know the teachers are intent on accompanying the kids as opposed to just chaperones.
As far as, Dr. Barry, as far as the teachers go, then that would be an administrative decision, then.
It would be.
But it sets a precedent if we do it this year, then it would need to be considered. Any other time there was a non-school-sponsored international extended day trip-
Sure.
-during a school year.
Well, that's the thing, it's how often, this doesn't occur very often.
It could.
And so I guess I'm, I'm willing to entertain making an exception when an all-expense-paid two-week trip-
For the teacher, you're saying?
Even for the teacher. I mean, we, we have externships and things for our teachers where they go study and work in Washington DC. We do make exceptions for teachers occasionally. So I guess I'm just inclined to find a way to make this work that protects the district.
Excuse me, Dr. Barry, you did say that the Lawrenson Institution did indicate that it wouldn't, that, that the students could go even if it was a non-school-sponsored trip?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that they would indeed release a school district from any obligation.
I would suggest to you, then, if that's the route that we're going, that we should not be able to use this trip in promotional materials for our Japanese program, nor should it be included in any kind of school communication if it's strictly on their own time.
That's correct. And that's in the policy that we have.
As far as the, the 10 days being gone, it would, and forgive me because I don't know the policy from this standpoint, but even within the states, is there, is there a particular amount of time during school that they can be gone that we're allowing? Is it two days, five days? Do we allow 10 days if they were to go someplace within the states?
Somebody from GIA want to answer that specifically?
I don't think our policy or guidelines have closed them on maximum on it. Typically, the trips aren't over 10 days.
Okay.
10 days or less, but-
10 schools.
Specific guidance has to-
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to put, whether it's international or, or within the continental United States, the 10 days doesn't make a difference at this point. Okay.
But would I be correct in assuming that for instructional purposes, we shudder at the idea of students missing 10 consecutive days of instruction, not just for Japanese, but all of the other classes that they're in during those 10 days? I mean-
Including, I believe, at the end of a quarter is what this would be.
So, I mean, I, I think, I, I mean, I think we take pause and go, "Whoa, that's a lot of time to be gone during school."
Here's a statement from the Lawrenson Institution. "The liability insurance letter states that because the trip is sponsored and funded by the Japan Foundation and Japanese Ministry of Foreign Affairs, the school districts should not assume liability for students from their district, nor those who visit from Japan."
Dr. Daniels, I appreciate what you're saying, but again, I think the, the students and the parents have the right to make a decision of whether they want to be gone 10 days. It's not us to decide, you know? If I want to take, if I wanted to take my son out of school for 10 days and go on a round-the-world trip, I could do that.
And I-
So what's the decision?
Yeah, I totally support that.
So what's the decision tonight, then?
I don't think there is one.
I don't think there is one.
I think we-
So one last, so one last question. So we make this, or we decide that the school wouldn't sanction it, that the district won't sanction it. However, we do like the idea of teachers going. Is that, is that a board vote at this point? Do we have to vote that?
That's administrative.
That's administrative. Okay. So that, so we could walk away, the trip could possibly happen, teachers could go to that, but it still wouldn't be a district sanctioned trip? Is that, am I correct? Okay. Let's try to make sure.
I personally encourage us to look at policies that are like this one, that give us no flexibility because this is a phenomenal opportunity. So every year, if one came up like this for, for students to go for free, I would say it's worth listening to.
You know, I don't disagree at all. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, but I, I tell somebody else this today, I guess I'm getting old and kind of fuddy-duddy, but the exposure in terms of what we would be exposing ourselves to liability-wise in this day and age with the restrictions we have on our reserves and budget is scary-
It is.
...to travel internationally if something were to happen.
And if I heard correctly from the discussion we've had, that we're really not inhibiting them from going. The decision we make tonight, if they still want to make the decision to go since it's an all-expense-paid go, trip, that they're, they have their parents' approval, they can still go.
I, I believe since they had the statement-
So I don't think we're inhibiting-
They don't care if the district approves it or not, I would assume.
So how do we prevent future liability, Scott? If these students do go on the trip, it's not a district sanctioned event, how do we convey that to the parents so that they understand that this district has no liability in this?
Well, I think a policy that's taken would be that the teachers who, if they choose to go, will convey that this is not a district-sponsored trip, and so-
I would like for legal counsel to convey that idea very clearly.
Do we have a standard way we inform parents when students take trips in the summers?
I'm sorry, say that again.
When students take international trips in the summertime, which I think is pretty common, is there a, a standard form or a way that we convey to parents that the district isn't sponsoring the activity?
I believe there is a form in our policy book that we suggest that they use. Of course, we try to be careful because on the one hand, we're saying we don't regulate it, but here's what we suggest that you do. Because it's not a, you know, we're really intentionally stepping away and saying, "This is an opportunity. It could be a tremendous opportunity. If you want to do it, do it." But it's, understand it's not district or school-sponsored.
And these are spelled out in the policy, then, that the school employees shall inform all participants and parents? They notices, announcements, distribution must comply with board, obviously. It shall contain a statement clearly indicating it's not sponsored. And then there's this field trip release and waiver form for non-school-sponsored that Scott talked about.
Ms. Felder, you know, and I appreciate what you're saying, and tonight I feel exactly the same way, but more, the more I process this, you know, I go back to 2008, I go back to some of the other trips we're having, and, and I have to tell you that when those, those students were on those trips, it was some sleepless nights, knowing that those, they were going to be safe and that there was nothing was going to happen, and we heard about what happened to the student from up north in Kansas, and that just terrorizes us, and so that, and that was after 2008 and all of the financial and economic difficulties that we're having, that's when we decided to rein this thing in, and I, I suppose we could deserve to take another look at it, but I look at it again and I'd say, it would have to be, I'd have to be really convinced that, that the district was really taking every precaution and that nobody was going to be injured on the trip, so.
Let me make you nervous.
Oh, it's scary.
Let me make you nervous again. This is the policy that's provided, and Scott did a little bit of analysis. The policy states that it covers accidents, sickness and liability. However, it explicitly excludes a list of items. Some of the relevant exclusions are bodily injury caused by a willful act. For example, if a student's injured, it's determined it's partly due to one of our staff members' negligence, will this be covered? I mean, those are the questions that you wouldn't really know until the attorneys got in.
Well, and the negligence, you know, if a student goes out after hours and they're out running the streets and then they're injured, and then somebody's going to say, "Well, why wasn't the teacher monitoring so they didn't go out after dark?" And the teacher already thought everybody was in their room and in bed, and they go to bed, and 2:00 in the morning, they find out one of their kids was out running the streets, so.
It's scary.
And was injured, so.
I don't mind leaving it like this. My one concern with, with kind of us having our hands off is making arrangements for the other classes being missed. Is there a way to convey to other teachers that we'd love for you to facilitate makeup work? Because you can get that one wild card teacher that's like, "Nope, I'm not doing it," you know?
In my opinion, that'd be an obligation of our teachers for a kid being gone from class if they would do what they could to help them make it up.
My experience is our teachers would work, but-
Yeah.
Just wondering if we can make sure that the students are safe that way, too.
You know, 23 kids for high schools, we don't know how the division's going to work out, and it could be four, five, six kids a high school, I don't, I don't know that, so it's not, not huge.
Scott, I got a question, and getting, going back again to offer to 23 students, we got 120-some students out there. It's not school sanctioned, so we don't get to use our decision tools of who gets to go, so somebody's still going to be making the decisions to go, and there's more students that want to go than what we allow. My fear is that we're crossing, it's a very gray area now, because we could save 23, but we got 28 that want to go, and it's, and this is their own choice now. How do we help them decide which 23 actually get to go? And that, we have to step completely away from that, and then that one child that doesn't get to go, is that family going to come back later and say, "How did, why did they get to go and I didn't get to go?" And does that pull us? It just, I think it either has to be school sanctioned or not school sanctioned, and then we just drop it all, because I'm afraid there's too many gray areas here that could pull us back in, because we're going to be making some decisions for them one way or another anyway.
Can I just suggest another way to look at it? Because I really think the invitation is coming from the institute, it's not coming from the district. And the institute can appoint whoever they like to select the students. It may or may not be our teacher, but it's, the, the decision isn't being made on behalf of the district, it's being made on behalf of the institute.
Okay.
And to point out, these trips, you know, happen all the time. It's one of the reasons we developed the policy, because teachers were taking students on trips, they were usually over the summer, and we just wanted to make sure that parents understood, because a teacher was organizing a trip, it doesn't mean it's a school or district-sponsored trip. We just wanted to make sure that was clear so parents could make a decision to go or not go, but they were fully informed. So that was kind of the impetus, I think, of developing that policy initially. Because the trips have been occurring, and to my knowledge are still occurring, they just usually occur over the summer.
In regards to Ms. Shearer's concerns, I think we just step away from it and say, "Hey, if the teacher's going to go, we're not sponsoring it, and you decide who's going to go, and we're done."
So should we make a motion to remove this from future action?
It's not an action item, it's a future action item.
We can, we could just pull it, we don't have to vote to remove it, I don't think. All right, so are board members comfortable just letting this sit and letting the administrators, administrators?
So we're directed to inform them that this is not a school-sponsored, school-sponsored or sanctioned trip. And then again, as we try to work something out, if, if it is two teachers that are to go, that you would look favorably upon a superintendent that worked that out in some way.
I would like, I would like to see the district not incur any costs.
Okay, so in terms of substitute costs? Okay.
All right. Well, so much for getting out of here early tonight. We received some information, some written reports on parent-teacher conferences, the Head Start Monthly Director's Report, and some construction change orders. Are there any comments or questions about those? Next, we have topics for discussion, anything that board members would like to bring up right now.
I would like to add to the agenda, talking about international travel sometime and reviewing the policy and making some possible adjustments to that.
And included in that, I'd like to see policies from other school districts. Our consortium would be one excellent resource as well as our, our neighboring school districts.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think we do need to do that because we can't go around with our heads in the sand and dodging it all the time, because it is an educational opportunity, and maybe it's an educational, it's an educational opportunity that our students, it's their future, prepared for their future. I understand, we have to look out for their future, but let's just make sure that if we need to revisit, we need to revisit it.
I think we absolutely do, because it's getting to be more and more of a global economy and everything else. These opportunities, while this one was too quick, I believe, these opportunities hopefully will come to us in the future, and hopefully we can have something put in place that we can be prepared for and, and successfully get these kids out to where they need to go.
I remember the problem from the past, that there was a plethora of them, I mean, we were overwhelmed with them, and every year there was seven, eight, nine, 10 trips. And we have to, we have, if we're going to sponsor them, we have to make sure that we have some control on them as well.
I have an item for discussion.
Okay.
You may recall that we had the Kansas City Symphony perform at Alitha South High School, and several of our students participated in that concert by introducing each of those numbers, and Dr. Barry introduced the event. I have season tickets to one of the short series with the Kansas City Symphony, and much to my surprise and pleasure, in the program from the last concert that I attended, which was back in November, there's a section in here where Dr. Barry is pictured along with the Kansas City Symphony at Alitha South. And then on another page, there are picture of the four students who've been chosen to participate in the composer-in-residence program along with Adam Schoenberg, the composer who they'll be working with. So I will leave this with Dr. Barry to add to our archives, if you will. I'm assuming that this will continue in the program all year. They put three concerts into each program, there are 14 concerts in the year, so I think that picture will continue to show up in there. And in addition, I will forward to Dr. Barry an email that went out from Frank Byrne, who is the executive director of the Kansas City Symphony, to the major donors of the symphony, and this was forwarded to me, had the picture of Frank that was taken here at our board meeting where we acknowledged the Kansas City Symphony and what they had done for the school district, and that was sent out to the major donors of the symphony, and he said, "Wow, look at what Alitha is doing." So I just wanted to show that with everyone here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Then I believe Dr. Barry has a few things to share with us.
Just a few things, and then I want to share something and have a staff member share something that's a little more timely, but a quick comment about legislative season. We are getting closer all the time. They have chosen the captains now for their teams, and we're waiting on committee assignments that will, will be happening. Want to let you know that our webpage and our publication on legislative priorities for us will be finished up just as soon as we know committee assignments. In that publication, we list who our representatives and senators are and what committees they're on and so forth, so that can be of interest. But again, we're going to start to get active with attending the meetings, the breakfasts that are held, meeting with legislators. As you know, we had a Milken Award winner, Michael Berant from Prairie Center. We're going to invite him to come to a board meeting so that you can meet him and recognize him. We just had a big crowd already scheduled for tonight, and that's why he is not, not here. Want to also let you know that we're going to continue to take a step forward in terms of a potential bond issue. Spoke to a small, a group this week just briefly, and when I mentioned Fifth High School, somebody from the crowd just hollered, "Where is it going to be?" I mean, that's kind of what they're, they're interested in, but as a part of this, we're going to be having some small board briefings that we'll be inviting you to, to inform you about and get your input on a task force formation, possible timelines, state information and impact, update on our needs and so forth, so you can look forward to that, if you would. What I want to stop then, and I think it'd be wrong to mention a timely issue that's happening late today and impact potentially tomorrow, but Dr. Dugan's going to step up and talk about something that's in the news this evening. If you have not seen it, I sent you an email about some graffiti written on a wall at Alitha South.
Unfortunately, breaking news tonight on a bunch of the media stations is the incident that occurred at Alitha South. So I'll give you some facts and then answer questions you might have. Earlier today, the South administration was made aware of some graffiti in a boy's bathroom, and that graffiti was a threat that this person, "I will blow up the school," and the date for tomorrow. Administration, including the school resource officer, immediately started an investigation, made sure the school was safe at that time, they prepared communications, Mr. Clark visited visited with all the student body over the PA system, worked very closely with the police department, sent information out to the community tonight, an email with really transparent information of what it was. Mr. Clark, the Olathe Police Department, feel it's not a credible threat, they are not concerned for the safety of our students tomorrow. Mr. Clark will tell you it's going to be just a fabulous, safe Friday at Olathe South tomorrow, for his staff and students. The investigation's ongoing, certainly, it's inappropriate, it's caused great disruption, it's upset a community, it's made the news, and so they'll continue to find out who, who did it, and they're checking some of their video surveillance cameras and some of those things. So that's ongoing, they're encouraging students that would know anything to bring that information forward. Certainly, lots of questions. We want all the students of South to go to South tomorrow and have a great day at school. We'll have an extra police officer or two there, not because we're concerned, but just to reassure the community that we're watching. We'll continue to be very vigilant in our supervision in the hallways. Certainly, all staff and students are aware, and most times, just that awareness brings a great sense of safety. But I'd be happy to answer any questions and share other things you're either hearing or that we can answer about the situation at South.
Have you done any sweeping for bombs or any devices that would...
A question we asked really early on with the police department, was that needed? And they feel strongly that is not needed or necessary. Should there be anything suspicious tomorrow? We would immediately stop and reconsider that need to do that. But we checked very early with the police department, they do not feel that's a necessary step at all.
Was school disrupted at all? I, I got the email late, so I'm not sure what the timeframe was when this was discovered.
Here's how school was disrupted, I think handled very well, but high school students learned of it. A picture of what was in the bathroom stall was sent as a text message by a student and went what we call viral. So was there lots of chatter and stir and talk? There was. Teachers report classes went great. This was discovered a little bit before 1:00. So a couple more classes, the day ended, students were all abuzz about it, I think, as school ended. But other disruptions, no. I mean, classes changed, and content was taught, and all those good things, but it was quite the buzz.
What's entailed in a, a bomb sweep, do you know? I mean, is it resources that we don't want to tie up?
So would be exceeding my expertise, but lucky for you in the room tonight, there he is. Sergeant John Williams is our unit supervisor, and he's also our, our guy on duty tonight, too, so he's not here specifically for this, but, and maybe can talk a little bit about what that entails, or why we're, why they are choosing not to go that direction right now.
Yeah, it's really not my area of expertise, really, either. It falls on the fire department, but I have a little bit of a background in it. It really entails, I have a couple bomb dogs, that they're going to run in work areas, areas that the dogs can't work, they have equipment that they'll try to use to search those areas. Problem with a school of that magnitude and that size is, is the, is a labor, the time intensive. Can we get it done in time for school to start? Because dogs, they only have so many, they get tired, and they run down, they have to rest. So, so you're, you're really got that to consider. The other thing to consider in it is, is the credibility of the threat. Like Dr. Dugan said, we don't really, there's, isn't anything that leads us to believe this is a meaningful or credible threat. So we start, we start doing these things with resources, then we start lending that credibility to the threat, and do, then what do we, we start bringing on, on us at that point in time? So that is really, in a nutshell, ran by the fire department, they're really kind of of the same agreement, that this isn't something at this point in time that we feel that is a necessary thing that we need to, to bring out. Obviously, we can, if it, if it comes to that point, but, and in fact, I'll take some other questions if, yes, and specifics on that, but that's kind of where we're standing at this point in time.
Thank you.
You know, I know in the past, we've had situations where, in fact, they were very quick to have, I'm going to call it bomb squad, is that right? Sounds like a TV show, but the bomb squad came in and did a sweep, and they had information that, with their expertise, decided, required it. And, and this information isn't there for this situation.
Dr. Dugan, given the distress that it's causing and the upset that it's causing, what, what is our policy? Perhaps you can just explain that for me again and for the audience. Should we find the culprit who is responsible for causing this distress? How does that fit in our disciplinary policy?
Certainly, any threat to the school property, student staff, made by a student would fall under a violation of the, the code of student conduct. It'd be a class three offense, and with that would be administrative options up to and including expulsion from school. So would be taken very seriously, and they'll continue to do a very thorough investigation, again, with the assistance from the police department.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
I believe Mr. Parker has one.
I was at KSB convention this weekend, and went to the session presented by Dale Dennis from the Department, Kansas Department of Education, and more distressing news, unfortunately. The consensus, this is a consistent estimate for November 6, 2012, that the 2013 revenue would be 6.1 billion, which would be, which would be...
Down about 300 million from what it was projected earlier in the year, 6.4 billion. For 20 fiscal year 2013, which will be, 2014, which will be our next budget year, the consensus estimate says that revenue will be 5.4 billion, that's 700 million less than what we would see in this fiscal year. Just in order for the, and then state's making some changes, some expenditure changes, like 27 million from authority shifted from 12 to 13. We get paid late, basically. What that means, reduction of 18 million for human services and 21 million for revision for school finance. So all of that being said, with those revisions, it, just, in, in order for the state to have a zero balance at the end of 20, fiscal year 2014 is 327 million. And so, I, I didn't understand this, Mr. Hudson, maybe you can explain this to us. If state aid remains the same, LOB proration percentage will decrease. So 2012-13 is 79%, 2013-14 is projected to be 75%. What that means is for us to raise the same amount of money locally as we have in the past, we'd have to raise a mill, is that, is that correct? Why is that? Can you go to the microphone and explain that, why that is?
On two fronts, there would be less coming through the general fund, so the legal max, your budget would be lower, so 31% times a lower number, so you'd have a lower target. And the state aid that, that goes to offset the LOB, let's say it's $20 million, you get so much state aid, let's say it's $4 million, you really only tax 16 to your community. They're going to start whittling down that 4, they're just going to multiply it by 75 instead of 85. So now, all of a sudden, it may only be 3, now you got to go out and give 7, and tax your community 17 to get to the same amount. So proration's a, a bad word, it's just a percentage less than 100%.
That was a word that Dale Dennis used.
Districts that don't get LOB state aid, it wouldn't impact them, they're raising it all locally right now, anyway.
Mr. Dennis made the statement, they have, there's two choices, raise taxes or cut the budget.
That we already know. All right, thank you, Mr. Parker. We need 10 minutes, I believe, for an executive session tonight? So if someone would like to make a motion?
The board adjourned the executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to discuss matters related to employer, employee negotiations, and that the board will return to the regular meeting at 8:30 PM in this room. The executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and for the purpose of protecting the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest.
Second.
Ms. Hips, we have a motion by Mrs. Ashley, or Ms. Ashley, and a second by Mr. Parker. Would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.